You guys all ready?
Alright.
Hello? This is the Village of New Paltz Planning Board meeting, October 6th, 2015. And welcome, everybody. Our agenda tonight, other than public comment, which we'll start with in a moment, we have an application for -- to consider authorization for a temporary certificate of occupancy for 71 Main Street. To determination of application completeness, 16 North Chestnut and 3 Plattekill Avenue, 86 Main. And then we'll have a pre-application discussion with the laylaw group. We'll continue our discussion about changes -- proposed changes to Section 21223. And then we have some minutes to approve and maybe one or two administrative things. Okay? So, anybody here tonight to speak on any planning board related stuff for public comment? This so far, this hasn't been much of a hit. Oh for two.
Either we just dodged a bullet twice.
Perhaps. Okay. So, let's move on to the first item. You all have a letter from the building inspector related to PB 1501 and BP 1586, 71 Main Street. And the situation is, we approved the site plan for this. This is the property that -- it was a single storefront, it's being split into two properties with an entranceway and sort of a vestibule that would separate the two. There were minor changes in the field, some changes to the awning color, and some changes interior. And in order to facilitate the process, the tenants who are hoping to move in this month, and we wanted to -- the building inspector has been on the site and the changes are relatively minor, but we as a planning board are gonna have to amend the site plan, so they have to come forward with that later this month. In the meantime, in order to avoid -- or in order to consider avoiding holding up the tenants moving in, we can, according to our code, issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. And so, the letter is, "In accordance with Section 21264A of the Code of the Village of New Paltz, please consider granting the Building Department permission to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy for the two new business premises that are being created at 71 Main Street. That temporary certificate of occupancy would enable the use of those spaces while the planning board's approval for relatively minor changes to the site plan is sought. Those spaces could be ready for you soon. Respectfully submitted, Bryant Arms, Chief of Public Enforcement." So, the request is for a three-month CVO.
Do you know what the changes were, Michael?
There was some changes to the color of the awning. And the interior changes, I think, had to do with the placement of the bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe that was it.
The color of the awning was under R.
Well, I don't know exactly if that's on the site plan, I'm not really sure.
It isn't -- I remember discussing the color.
It is on the site plan.
It is?
It's due on the issue.
Yeah. It must be.
It's on the approved site plan.
Yeah, so I guess it must be in the notes specifically. I didn't go back.
So, is Bryant here to tell us maybe what the other issue is, you said, related to the bathrooms?
I asked him whether -- I talked to him this afternoon, and he felt that -- so, here's the situation. In two weeks, they will come -- the architect will come and actually go over the site plan changes. So, I didn't go into detail about that, because basically what I was -- the impression I got from him was that it was just a change to the location of the bathroom. But I don't wanna be abs -- I don't wanna speak for certain.
So, we can't wait two weeks to?
Well, the problem is that the certificate -- the tenants may be ready to move in before our next meeting. And so, the question is, can we -- he felt that it was -- the changes were minor enough that he didn't wanna hold up the landlord and the tenants from getting -- being able to move into the property. In principle, if something comes up in two weeks and we're completely dissatisfied, I suppose you would tell them that they can't occupy the space.
It's kinda harder to --
Yeah.
To tell them they can't, than say wait.
I mean, well, actually, we're giving them a three-month basically, so he couldn't just throw them out. I don't -- I don't have more details than that at this point, so. It's -- the impression I got from him more than once was that it was a relative -- these were relatively minor changes that wouldn't -- I mean, they're not gonna affect the use of the building or the look of the building from the outside, other than the different color going. So, but I understand.
So, it's just a more like a technicality that the changes are enough to affect the site plan, and we then have to okay that site plan with those changes?
Yeah.
That's what it amounts to. Because normally, we wouldn't be in the loop on certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
Except that temporary COOs are the planning board's jurisdiction.
Okay.
We have to --
Because it's a temporary.
Because it's a temporary one.
Okay. That falls under our purview, because presumably, this is the reason why there would be a need for a temporary one, for example.
What you'd be doing is actually authorizing the building inspector to issue the temporary CO.
Right.
He has his own stance for issuing it, that the property is safe, that they can move in safely, so on. So, all you're doing is saying, "In terms of the site plan, it's okay with us to go ahead and perform your responsibility of issuing the temporary CO."
Okay. Yeah. I understand your hesitation, John, but...
Well, they had a problem in this particular case, but what happens if somebody didn't perform under a temporary CO?
It would...
We shut them down.
Well, when it expires, then the building inspector doesn't have to issue a permit.
Yeah, I guess we just wouldn't renew it.
Right.
Or issue them.
Sticky. Yeah.
It is sticky.
Sticky.
Well, and that may be why there's a couple of layers here, why the building inspector doesn't just do it. Maybe that's perhaps why we have to consider it as well. Because I can't recall the last time this came up, so. Anyway...
Well, the only problem I have is the exterior one. The interior changes is not adding more square footage, they're not adding more uses, they're not adding --
Right, sorry.
So, if they switch a wall around in the bathroom, or a door around in the bathroom, I don't see where I'm going to have to --
Um.
But as it looks from the street, I don't remember discussing the color, but if that was an important issue...
Well...
What's the change? Is it going to, you know, tennis ball green, or?
But we didn't discuss the change, the color. It was in the plan as he presented it, it was their choice.
Right.
And so, since it's gonna be different, they wanna make sure the plan's the same as what was approved.
Right.
I don't think it was an issue for the planning board of what color it was, it just happened to be the color they chose in the plan.
But to your point, those are conversations we'll have in two weeks. And if you have a serious objection to hot pink on it, if that's the color, I don't think it is, but...
Yeah. I mean, you can weigh in at that point. And, you know, and if we say no, then we have -- they haven't approved that plan, so they can go.
They can use, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any more discussion about this?
Stick a motion.
So, I have a resolution to approve the -- to authorize the building inspector to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. And I think I've mostly covered the wherays at this point. Terms of the -- this site plan was granted approval August 18th, 2015, and due to changes in the field conditions, they need to come back for a site plan amendment. Therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Village of New Paltz Planning Board that pursuant to Section 21264A, the planning board hereby approves the issuance by the building inspector of a temporary certificate of occupancy for the premises at 71 Main Street, Village of New Paltz, for a period of three months from the date hereof to allow the planning board to consider the application for site plan amendments. Have the motion?
So moved. One second.
Either one. Either one. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So, PB 1502, Good Will Church, you guys would like to come on up? Pull up as many chairs as you need.
Michael, did David talk to you about how we have room?
Yes, I heard that. I didn't see him, but I don't think it's gonna be all right. You all, good to see you again. Okay. So, you submitted a lot of new materials, let me just find them. Alright, so you wanna refresh everybody, we haven't seen them in a few months.
Yeah. So, we have been working diligently on the application, making sure that everything is in place. Wanted to thank Mr. Gilmore for his diligence in terms of assisting our representatives on their side of things, been very, very helpful.
Great.
And so, at this point, we've submitted everything, and we're ready to go to the next step.
Okay. So, for the planning board, we have comments from our planner, we have the cover letter, we have, because this building was locally landmarked, we have the additional review by the Star Preservation Commission. So, you've met with them once?
We did.
And you're scheduled to meet them again, or what's the...
They gave us a contingency.
Okay.
Based on the sign compliance.
Okay.
There was a -- I'll let Andy handle it, it's okay. There was a question at one point whether there's a variance granted for the height of the signs.
Right.
And I understand there is a variance, and that was looked into.
For one of the signs.
For the one of the signs.
For the whole sign.
Yes.
Right.
That's correct. And that has been resolved. There was not a variance on the awnings, so the existing awnings were out of bounds. And so, what we decided is, rather than, you know, change any of the signage, we just took the logos off the signs entirely.
Okay.
And we resubmitted a brand-new, which we talked to them that night about, we resubmitted that to Valerie.
Right.
And they said that that was okay by them. So, they accepted Plan A if it was a -- if there was an existing variance. Or if there was no existing variance, they would accept Plan B, which is the two-tone awnings.
Right, that's the green with the...
Of the green with the white on the tags.
With the beige on the sides.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So, at this point, I'm quite certain that we are all set with the HPC.
Okay, great. And then, we also have a letter from the adjacent property owner related to parking, that's certainly something we'll need to talk about, floor plans. So, and we can talk a little more about the signage. You have a full EAF. They have to do the full environmental assessment for it, because this is a local landmark building, so. And then, the amended site plan. So, those are the materials. Our responsibility tonight is to make a determination of completeness for this. We have to also consider, what's the consideration as far as county goes? It may not need to go to county, maybe there's no changes to lighting?
If, well, in this case, if there's an increase in parking required by local law, and I wasn't clear whether there was an increase in parking over required use, required use being a restaurant, which has a pretty high requirement for parking. And I haven't been able to concur to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't recall.
If it requires an increase in parking, then county requirements refer, which is a procedural step, nothing that you can send a protest in the next 30 days or more, 45 days.
So...
You know, without going through a multiple analysis, would Michael need to just refer to the county?
Yeah, it depends on -- I mean, we could do that. Well, let's come back to that item.
Just seems to me that there are other issues to come back to.
Right.
Like the historic, people -- did we get a letter back from the historic...
The Star Preservation Commission? We got their CVO, their C of A, rather, certificate of -- I forget what the A is for. Appropriateness.
Appropriateness.
Appropriateness, thank you. So, we got their whole document.
Okay, you got the final one? You got any other questions on it?
Yeah. Well, I think it was -- there were subsequent emails after that about dealing with the contingency.
Okay, sorry.
But for our purposes, I think we really need to decide if you have the information you need, does the site plan contain all of the issues? Does it contain all the information that you could need in terms of lighting, signage? And we certainly need to talk for a few minutes about parking, so.
Sure.
Can we start?
I mean, it seems to be all there. We haven't discussed it, we haven't had any public input on it, but it seems to be all there.
Okay.
I do have some questions though still about, I'm the one with the disability.
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm concerned with the ADA requirement. You don't need to have the second floor be accessible.
At this time, because of square footage of the existing building, there's an exemption of the building code that allows you not to...
A building that size is exempt?
3,000 square feet limit for the floor of the aggregate area.
What's per floor?
Yes. Of the aggregate area, and there's only two floors, so it's the area of the floors beyond the one floor. So, it's under, it's the, within the 3,000 square feet beyond the one floor. I can get you some script of what the actual wording is if you need it.
The second floor is less than 3,000 square feet.
Yes.
Right, so therefore...
So, you don't add the two...
2,000 or below, it's about 2,000.
You don't add the two floors together?
No, you don't. It's the floors, if there are three floors, you'd add the second, the third floor and the lower floor together. But when there's two floors, the main floor is not added in, it's one before, in that instance.
Even though the second floor is the one you're using for your main assembly?
Wouldn't that make it the main floor?
It doesn't designate which floor is the main floor in that instance.
So, you just kinda get to choose whichever's less?
Yes.
Which is your...
Well, they're both actually about the same square footage, honestly. It doesn't matter which one we're choosing, other than the fact that the upper one is accessible only by stairs.
Got it.
So, that exempts you from any ADA requirements, or have you put an elevator?
Adding accessible room to the upper floor.
Okay. But presumably, you'll make some provisions for...
As we had discussed, I mean, we do have, we have, our oldest congregant is 93, and so, we're gonna make accommodations, we're gonna make sure that there's a place on the ground floor that's comfortable for everyone, wheelchair, that would have wheelchair accessibility. The side door that's on Route 32 is wheelchair accessibility, so we bring them right in the side door, there's a location right near there, they'll have a flat screen TV and sound to be able to, and coffee brought to them. So, we really, we have kind of variance that this is gonna apply to, and we wanna make sure that we take the highest form of care for them.
Okay.
Can you show that on the site plan?
I can, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you like a narrative of that, or I'm not sure, a narrative might explain it a little better, or do you wanna actually on the site plan itself?
Well, you mean narrative on the site plan or narrative separate?
On the site plan.
No, it's on the site plan.
On the site plan.
So, it's there for the building inspector to be kind of...
Sure. Yep. Anything else, Rich?
No.
Liz, any?
I'm, I know that in the past, this is parking, is the category here. In the past, you had mentioned that you were gonna be bussing people in from someplace else.
Well, yes. So, basically, the way we looked at it is, we wanted to look at the existing parking situation, see if the planning board felt that the existing municipal lots on-street parking within a four to five block radius was substantial enough for what you thought would be required. And then, if that were the case, if that were not the case, we would go back and look at contingency plans with regard to busing from other locations. We do currently run a shuttle from SUNY New Paltz to our existing location, so we have probably about 40 SUNY New Paltz students that attend on the weekend, and so, we bring them in from, by a shuttle. And so, for us to run another shuttle, we would obviously be able to do that. We would like to see that we wouldn't have to do that, given the parking within municipal lots locally and the on-street parking that's there, and the fact that Sunday morning is a low-volume time, but we would certainly look at contingency plans if necessary. Which would include the Jewish Community Center, which is a block north, we would certainly go to them and just very graciously say, "Would it be possible for us to make an arrangement to utilize our parking lot on a Sunday morning," or something like that. So, at this point, what we wanted to do is, based on the existing parking study, based on the existing traffic flow study, see what your thoughts were, and if you really felt that it didn't handle the parking as it is now, then we would go back and look at contingency plans that would satisfy the need.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly talk more extensively after the...
Are you not going to be having services during evenings?
We don't plan on it at this point. Our services are Sunday mornings.
Exclusively?
Our main service exclusively. It would be 10:00 AM on Sunday morning. Right now, we're running about 150 people at our Sunday services. We have two right now in the New Paltz Town and Community Center. And so, that's the numeric number that we're looking at at this point is...
The reason I ask is that you're looking at using public spaces, and right now, our public spaces are overcommitted. And during the weekend periods, on Saturdays and Sundays, they're massively overcommitted.
Yeah.
Street parks are overcommitted. So, it concerns me that you're counting on overcommitted spaces to remedy a potential problem, when everybody else in the area is expecting to use the same spaces to remedy the same problem at the same time.
Yeah.
So, I guess kinda who gets priority when?
Yeah.
You know?
At this juncture, we have nothing planned for Saturdays. And so, Saturday is a high-volume, you know, Friday evening, Saturday evening are the high-volume times.
Well, Sunday's daytime is pretty high volume.
Sunday afternoon, but we would expect, I mean, services would be done by noon, and people would, unless they leave their cars there and go frequent the restaurants, which there's a good chance they might do that, so.
Just to comment on the parking rule as well, the original parking studies show that there's 120 parking spaces that we'd be looking for. Through a revision through one of our submission letters, that was actually revised down because of the way it's computed for the type of auditorium capacity, it's actually 44 spaces that we're looking, just to clarify that. To make sure there's not a misunderstanding from what was originally stated in the parking study.
So, your parking study originally said 150, now it's down to 44?
Said 120 originally.
120 down to 44? Why the reduction?
The reduction is because the way it was evaluated for at the time was different than the way it's actually gonna be used. You know, auditorium type evaluation's supposed to be one space for every six seats. So, in further review on the code, this is the actual number that applies to the estimated quantity of people in the building.
You have, what, 192 spaces in your floor plan, I think, something like that?
In terms of seats, I believe that is correct, yes.
Did I say spaces?
Yeah, you said spaces.
I meant seats, right, therefore...
According to the revised letter that came as the report, you show 262 seats is what was shown, so we accommodate that, one for every six is 44.
So, I guess in terms of parking for the purposes of tonight determining completeness, we just wanna make sure we have the information we need and that it's clear to you. The letter that you have from the property owner has...
We can turn it into a binding agreement.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Quickly.
Right. So, we need to make sure it'll pass muster over here. And you're leasing, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, we can set that to just run for the terminal lease, as long as it, right, it doesn't have to run with the property.
No, it should just run for as long as you're gonna be occupying the church, using that facility as a church.
Sure, okay, sure.
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah, so we will need that. The other issues that I have, some of them are off EAF, but they can wait until, I mean, they're not, for tonight, they're not issues, just some clarifications of some points here. So, and we can go over some details of the site plan, but I think otherwise, it's pretty good. I, you all, let me ask you one question. You do have a kitchen. Are you gonna continue to use that in some capacity?
Much of the hardware was taken out, and so, we would like to eventually rehabilitate that and get it used as a kitchen.
Okay.
But at this juncture, we don't have it set in that way to be able to use it. It's not gonna be used.
So, in the rear of the building, there are two large solid waste containers. One is for trash, and the other one is for grease. And you should arrange to get the grease one removed if you're not gonna be using it. And then, the other one, it's not shown on the site plan, but we're gonna probably need some kind of enclosure for that, right? So, it's just open.
An enclosure for...
Yeah.
It's a dumpster.
The dumpster needs to somehow...
Screening of some sort.
Screening of some sort, yeah. There's specific details to that. But in terms of the site plan, you'll wanna show where you're gonna wanna put that, and then just show that it's enclosed, and then we can look at the details.
Jim?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Those at home are having trouble hearing, may I ask that you speak into my phone?
Sure, happy to speak into the phone. John?
So, there's a grease container, I know, but there's no grease trap, just like an underground?
Oh, I don't know about internally what there is.
Okay.
Yeah, I just drove by and I noticed there was one of those large containers that the grease can go in, it then gets picked up by a truck. But if you're not using it, you don't wanna keep it there.
Yeah, we're gonna take that off.
Okay. I don't have anything else at this point, so I think that it might be worth sending this to county, you really can make some good suggestions.
I think we should send it to the county, and if you wanna go ahead with Seeker, you should declare lead agency and circulate to other involved and interested agencies.
So, we'll need to do a few things. We have to determine that it's complete, send it to county. Since it's a full EAF, we have to declare ourselves lead agency. And there's a 30-day window for that, for circulation, the county has 30 days. So, we could go ahead and set a public hearing, but at this point, then it would be the...
I'm checking for you right now on the next kind of date. I believe that it might be the 3rd, if you feel that we need one moment to look for it.
3rd of November?
November.
Okay.
We'll see. The meeting for October is tomorrow night.
Okay.
It would actually be the 4th of November, please excuse me.
So, our, that would mean public hearing, we could set...
The 17th.
For the 17th of...
November.
November.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Okay.
That allows all the 30 days to pass.
Okay, good. Okay, so, motion to deem this application complete.
Second.
Any discussions about that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and then, so, a motion to declare the Village of New Paltz Planning Board as lead agency for Seeker, and to circulate this to the Village of Star Preservation Commission and any...
Declare tensions of citizens.
Declare tension to serve.
Strongly.
I'm sure we'll be up...
Strongly.
It's gonna be a fight between us and the Star Preservation Commission as to who does this. Okay. So, our intention to declare the lead agency for purposes of Seeker and to submit this to the Village of New Paltz's Star Preservation Commission and any other interested agencies.
So, moves?
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So let's figure out a list of the involved and interested agencies.
Okay.
The Star Preservation Commission.
I'm sorry?
A list of the involved and interested agencies that get copies. The Star Preservation Commission, and I think the Department of Transportation, because it faces on a state highway.
Okay.
And Department of Health. You are, you have, you want to keep open the bus stop using a restaurant, so, okay, sorry, using the, uh...
Kitchen, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
State Department of Health. And, uh, there's no variances, correct?
Yeah, that's open on the sign variance from previous, existing variance.
Existing, but you don't need any new variance.
No, they're not requesting any.
No. Okay. We modified the signs to be underneath the performance.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any other agencies, D C? County or county, right?
What's that?
Where the county is getting it already.
The county's getting it. Don't get the whole thing. No?
That's probably it.
That's probably it. Okay. So we'll circulate to Village of New Paltz Star Preservation Commission, uh, New York State D O T, and Ulster County Department of Health. And... So a motion to set a public hearing for this application for November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think we're all done. Thank you.
Good, appreciate it.
Go on.
Please.
Actually, it's my birthday.
Um, okay. Next item is PB fifteen sixteen, one-three Platakill Avenue and eighty-six Main Street. Come on up. How are you guys?
Good, how are you guys?
Great.
Now, why are you even shorter than you are?
Dead chair.
Yeah, you got, your chair's like a line.
The comfy chairs.
Guys want to switch chairs?
So, um, tell us what you...
Okay, well, Joel Fisher, I have the property that houses our Del Care, Starbucks, and in the future, another property, another business, which is likely to be a tattoo parlor run by Chris here. And we're, I'm just here to really get a site plan approval for a minor modification of the building, which is already for permitted core business retail use.
Right, so you had originally wanted to do a commercial group?
Yes.
It seems to be some change.
It was a matter of square footage and how that, you know, met the zone, the requirements.
Right, so there was some issue that that wasn't needed, but is this such a small space that...
It's small. It's not needed, it's, it's, it's too small for a commercial group.
Okay.
So it's just inappropriate. It's easier actually just to proceed with the modification site plan instead for retail use. Because retail use is a permitted use in the, in the district, so it's not a, it's not complicated, it's actually simplifying things.
And since the site plan was already approved?
It's already simplified, the site plan is already approved.
Okay. So tonight again, we're just making a determination of completeness. I think the, we should not need to send this to the Ulster County Planning Board. The only condition would be the way the light, you're going to have a new sign up and then you're going to have lighting on that presumably. And so we have to ensure that the lighting, um, doesn't create any glare on that, in order for this to...
We understand. Absolutely.
And there was some issues about the fact that this is a very, the way the door opens, it's a very narrow, um, space on the sidewalk. And your architect had specifically requested that we allow the door to continue to open out into the street. Otherwise, I guess it would make the space inside even more problematic to use, is that...
Not only that, but there's an incline.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Ramp goes up inside.
Inside, so you can't, you can't do it.
I don't know if you can have a commercial door open in anyway.
Is that right? Okay.
Just for, under fire, because I think you can.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay. And I'll take care of that.
Is that a full glass door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, I don't see much else from our planner. And I don't have any issues with determining this is complete instead of the public hearing, but...
But let's go around.
Is it appropriate time to ask specific questions about the setup?
Sure, you can now.
I, I see that by, um, we're saying that it, the public, PB fifteen sixteen is for both one-dash-three Platakill Avenue and eighty-six Main Street. And on here, you're telling us where eighty-six Main Street is, but yet this detail over here seems to indicate that you'll be rearranging walls to then go into what is now presently aerial dental?
Never though.
No?
No, I think you have... Looks different.
Yeah, that's eighty-six and that's...
Oh, okay, yeah, I have an old one.
You have an older one.
Yeah, that's eighty-six and then...
Okay. No, that makes more sense.
And then that's Platakill down there.
I see why you asked that. Okay. No, I have an old, uh...
That's pretty sharp.
There you go. Good work.
Yeah, no changes to the interior walls, in terms of the layout of the building.
Okay. So what you're showing over in the detail, which I think is the same, is what is existing now?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't clear on the sign language.
Yes.
Is the, is the sign, you're going to use the sign that's there now with the bracket, or you're going to change that? There's a bracket coming out now with the sign, right?
Correct.
Are you going to use the same sign, or just change the face of the sign? Or you're going to change the whole thing?
I would like to use the, the sign, just not illuminate it interior, from the interior, but illuminate it from the exterior. Because according to, what I understand, code says that you cannot illuminate it from the inside.
So you want to use the existing frame and put a new sign in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, and then hang lights or light from the building or something?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so the note said new sign to be hung, using lighted sign, using lighted sign bracket. Is that, that's the existing lighted sign bracket? Is that what that means?
Yes, I, I believe they're referring to as a lighted sign bracket, because there was originally an internally lit sign. Which we won't be internally lighting any longer.
And then you say sign will be hung no lower than eight feet above the sidewalk, extending up, up to four feet, which is just repeating what the code says.
Correct.
That made it sound like you were going to put something else up there and move it around. What I'm trying to get to is that we have to know where the sign is for the site plan that's approved. And what the sign, what size of it is.
From what I understand, the code says that it can be no more than five feet out from the building, no taller than, no taller than four feet, no wider than five feet. I don't intend to use all that space. I intend to keep it probably about three by four.
Okay.
So as long as you do, they can approve it.
Correct.
You just can't put on the same thing, which I could do.
Right.
Is that a problem?
I, I was under the impression that was more of a building department issue when I put in for my, my building permits. The exact sign colors and, you know, square footage.
Well...
It's actually a planning board issue, because we have a sign as part of the site plan. Site plan changed, the sign is considered with the site plan by the county.
You just have to first have to have a problem with the color of the morning. You have a problem with the sign on there.
We don't, we don't need to know exactly what the final sign will necessarily look like, but we need to know the dimensions, where it's going to be on the building.
Okay. So it would be fair to...
Are we going to have a problem with the cumulative sign square footage with the three businesses?
I don't think so.
I imagine Starbucks has already exceeded it.
I think maybe.
You know, we try to calculate that, every day if we do that, to figure out.
Yeah.
To find out, first of all, there is a potential problem, but I don't, you know, there could be. I mean, we have a part of the code that says you can have different businesses in the building.
Correct.
But then you have to add up all the signage, and there's a square foot limit for that. So I don't know.
No, Joel's is not that big. Starbucks letters aren't measured by the size of the letters, they're measured by the rectangle you put around them. So the spaces count between the letters.
And it goes with the, it goes with the, the building up for the total square foot, for the whole building?
Okay.
Yeah, but each, each business is entitled to a certain...
But what happens if one of the buildings exceeds their, or one of the tenants exceeds their square footage?
It's the building that counts. I'm just only saying to bring yourself...
Well, I'm just saying if it puts them over the limit, but this won't put them over the limit.
I, I don't know, it's a good question.
Thirty, thirty square feet is from what I, what I understood, per, per business?
No.
No, for the building.
For the building.
And how big is Starbucks? And then how big is yours, Dr. Fisher?
Starbucks could, could be two foot by ten foot, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's that whole, it wraps that whole front inch you did over.
Yeah.
And if all that is true, then, then you might need a variance.
Yeah.
And the only reason I bring it up is that if you're trying to move this along quickly, you may want to start that variance process real soon.
It's a good idea.
Well, we don't know the dimensions of the other signs, so I can't decide it, but I have a certain point to the part of the code that gives you that number. And I think it is thirty square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so should we get, should we get David or one of the inspectors to give us a...
Yeah, I think that would be the thing.
Does it matter whether the, the frontage is on two separate streets?
Good question.
As to...
It might.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might.
I was wondering about that, that is a good question.
Yeah.
I guess it goes to the total building, it's a total building regardless of how many...
Talks about the building, yeah. I don't remember anything about streets.
Because it, it, since we're, since we're covering two streets, basically, uh, it would seem fair, you know...
Well, one street with Starbucks beyond.
Yeah.
Well, we can split it. So we, we could have thirty square feet on one side, thirty square feet on the other side.
We'll check it out, but I think it's probably a good idea to go ahead and start with the variance.
I have no intention of...
I brought it up now instead of later.
So I, I, you know, I'd like to do a, a minimal sign, three foot by four foot, twelve square feet, or, you know, that, that's what I...
We understand, it's just trying to fit within the code.
Yeah, of course.
Make sure it fits within the code. If it doesn't, go ahead and apply for the variance just in case.
Right.
Yeah, let's get, we'll get a planner to, to do the calculations and let you know if there's any concern with respect to your sign. So knowing the actual dimensions of your sign is...
Important, important. It counts both sides, because yours is the same.
Right. So you want to know the rectangular dimensions times two, that's your square footage on each side. And that's all you, so you'll want that, whatever you end up deciding to do, you want that identified on the site plan. So we know where it is, the size of it. If you're going to be lighting it externally, then you can identify where those are going to be. And we want to make sure that those, that the lighting is specifically on the sign, it doesn't spread out.
Right.
The only, may I ask a question? What about a window sign? How does that change the dynamics?
It's considered a sign, because it's only one face.
Right.
Like a wall sign, same thing. So we count it. And it should only be a dimension around, it should just be the dimension of the characters.
So you like a printed sign that's inside the window?
I'm just asking, you know, how, you know, that might mitigate, you know, any, you know, variance need.
Yeah, it might, yeah. It might. You know, but you have to consider the, the needs of your tenant, your visibility and all that.
Just looking at both sides, so, you know, you have options.
And a variance isn't necessarily on this.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly on my side variance. It just takes a little more time.
It's more timing.
Yeah, it's more, exactly, it's more a matter of, they meet once a month, you put the application in, they have to...
If needed.
Yeah, if needed. So you can start the process and then you can always pull it.
Yeah.
Will that, that process stop you from scheduling a public hearing?
No.
So we can still move forward with this process?
Yes, absolutely.
That's great.
Just fast. When, when is the next ZDA?
Next Tuesday.
So they would have time, fourteen days, right?
They don't have time for this meeting.
Yeah, I would, first, I'd start with the building inspector's person, just have them measure the signage.
Yeah, have them measure, make sure everything's good. We'll have, we'll ask our planner to, to make sure that everybody's looking at the right part of the code for this. You raise a good point, since you're on two streets, that might be...
That is interesting.
That might be a plus.
Jim?
Okay.
I might ask that you consider making a, a potential law motion to refer to the, to the ZDA if it's determined, because the, the ZDA can't talk about it unless there, there's a problem from the building, your referral or from the building inspector. And only so that we can help make it faster.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so let's start with a, unless there's more discussion, um, a motion to determine this application complete.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, and let's see then, if we don't need to send this to county, um, we could set a public hearing for our next meeting. And then depending on what we find out, we may have to keep it open. Okay. So a motion to set a public hearing for PB fifteen sixteen, um, on October the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven PM. Oh, wait, we already have one public hearing, so we'll say at, um, seven twenty?
You can make it immediately following, and that way you can start whenever it's going to be.
At immediately following.
Just want to make it a little easier.
Go next to the farm up there.
Um, that's the motion. Don't all jump the lines? Oh, sorry.
Someone moved it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So Kitty's good suggestion. Any discussion about making a referral to the ZDA if needed for a minor sign variance?
Until we see the sign and know what's down there, I, I don't know what to recommend.
Right, okay. So, um...
Well, I think it's an answer, so if John, I'm sorry, if they determine that there's a need for variance, then they can automatically apply.
Right.
And then the ZDA will have it before them with an application.
And we can do it on the twentieth, I just realized that too.
Then they can do it.
So, thanks. Okay. So then, um, we'll make sure that, you guys should stop in the building department, find out about the sign. And then we'll see you in two weeks. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thanks. And so now we have a pre-application, PB fifteen fifteen, um, with the light up. You guys come up.
Tattoos and teeth. Tattoos and teeth.
Tattoos, coffee and teeth.
Kind of, kind of got everything on one.
You get the Novocain for both.
Yeah.
Actually, no. Time to start because we pulled out.
So you're going to do a multiple sign. After a while, it's time to...
I don't know, I've never had a tattoo. Well, I can't say I've never had a tattoo, but not mine was, so they could, it was for medical reasons. I had a tattoo here and here and here, so they can...
Shoot you the right places.
Yeah. Katie, this is your... Ma'am, I'm not sure why this is sitting here.
Someone moved it from the podium.
Okay. Can we take it off? Okay, can we take it off the table? Excellent, okay, thanks. Thanks. Uh-oh.
We didn't, we didn't bring our-
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have a little bit of this weekend's speakers, but perhaps you'd like to just share your microphones?
Okay. Do that. Who's the audience?
Strength in numbers.
It's only happening, okay. It's good, because we don't have, we can have a poll.
Safety in numbers.
So, well-
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name's, uh, John Capello, I'm an attorney with Jacobus and Dubitz, and I'm here, um, tonight, um, on behalf of Alalo Group, Luis Martinez, and Sergio Raimondo. And we also have with us, um, Jason Anderson. Jason is the, um, project architect from Fire Anderson, and Justin Dates, the project engineer from Major Consulting. Hi, Jonathan. We're here tonight, uh, we, we've been to the, uh, village board, and what we've presented to the village board, um, Lalo's group vision for the redevelopment of the, um, it's known in New Paltz for ages as the pit. It's, um, just right over there, it's not often I can point to the property from a, from a meeting, it's a two and a half acre property, there's been several attempts, um, to develop it over, um, the years, Luis and the Lalo Group are local folks, their offices are here in, uh, New Paltz, Luis went to high school in, um, in, in New Paltz, he has a vision, um, for New Paltz, he came to project team here to, um, discuss it, and I'm gonna let, uh, Jason explain the architecture and Justin explain the, the property, but really, uh, in order to accomplish this vision, um, we need a fairly significant, uh, zone change to, um, accommodate the type of, uh, development that's proposed, so, uh, what I submitted to the village board, uh, was just one option of how that can be, uh, considered. Uh, we didn't even formally petition yet, because really, uh, what we're here for is initial feedback, as I told the village board, we're looking for some input, we're willing to, um, willing to work with the village to, you know, accommodate, uh, your concerns, but there are certain benchmarks that the Lalo Group will need to know, that is something that New Paltz can live with before we go forward and spend a lot more money, I know there were certain reports in the paper, one was pretty accurate, one was, you know, um, taking a position, and I think, you know, what we're here to do is, is listen and to see if we can come, um, to some meeting of the minds to move forward, knowing it's going to be a long process to go, you know, both the planning board and the village board will have to work in tandem to go through secret to do, um, all the initial studies, but really, we want to know if there's no chance, and it's something that you don't just have in your vision, before they spend a lot of more, more money, I mean, we think it's a, a great possibility, it's a, it's a use of, uh, parcel of land that's been vacant, that's one of the last, like, pieces that they can establish that, uh, can be developable, it can create a real sustainable, uh, walkable, uh, state-of-the-art, um, you know, energy-efficient, um, design that can bring people to the downtown, can serve as a focal point, and as will be explained, is in just about the same view shed of the existing college towers, so you're putting a second tall building in the same view shed instead of a, several smaller buildings sprawled out, so it, it is sustainable, we believe it is, where modern development i- is going, we believe it's, you know, a, a smart growth, um, and could be compatible with the village, so with that, I'm going to give it over to Justin, can you just explain maybe the, the layout and the property before Jason goes into the, uh, design?
Do you want me to bring these over to the, to the board, it's right there, fine? Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference, that's okay. Yeah, that's fine, Justin.
As Justin said, Justin Dates, Major Consultant, uh, landscape architect, and also a resident of the village in Paltz. We've been together for some time now, I'm, I'm putting together this, this proposal, and, uh, excited to, uh, to give it to the board here, so just to orient everyone, uh, to the project site, um, is it yellow here, um, it's about two point four acres in size, and the town, or the village is the B two zoning district. To the north, we have Front de Jong, Platteville, again, here's the village, uh, building. South, we have, uh, Front de Jong Hasbrook, and then, um, we have the west is Elting. As you know, the, the site is, is vacant, um, there is some substantial grade change on the site, it's about thirty-two feet, um, the high side being of the long parking, and coming down as you travel west to, uh, to Elting, so, uh, you'll see this as, uh, Jason presents, you know, see how we use that kind to our advantage and, um, with the building layout itself. Um, we have access to, to public, uh, water and sewer, um, and also, um, we, front way along, we have municipal parking area here too, you see what, we'll see how that connects, uh, into the project itself. So this one had north facing up, um, you'll see on our, our layout, this is in your, uh, your package there, north is gonna be to the, to your right. Hasbrook, and then here, Elting, and then Platteville. So we see, uh, we developed a, uh, a concept, uh, that has a residential and a hotel component, uh, with some, uh, some commercial units as well. Um, the, uh, southern end of the site, I'll start here, um, we're looking at a ninety-six room hotel, uh, six stories. Um, that has also, the first floor will be a conference or banquet area, um, and a cafe, top floor of this, um, is a restaurant and spa. And the, uh, the northern, uh, building is the residential, or the, the condominium building, uh, we have eighty-one minutes, uh, in that structure, and that's, uh, eight stories. Now, one thing, um, kind of unique about the project is, you don't see any parking. We have the two-level parking garage, um, in, in the, uh, design of the project, and, uh, basically you can see that, uh, that structure, we don't have any surface spaces shown, that's gonna be some, uh, rooftop gardens, um, so we, uh, could manage room space considering that the two-level parking garages has about four hundred parking spaces. Um, and we would look to, uh, incorporate some level of public parking, uh, into that. Again, with the municipal lot, parking lot over here, we show access into our garage, so, um, that is a portion of the project, you know, we, we'll look to discuss as things, uh, get more detailed. Other access points to the site, you see we have a, um, the Platteville over here, we have a site driveway, it goes through and connects down to, uh, to Hasbrook. This is our main entry point, uh, atrium, uh, where guests would be dropped off, uh, turnaround, um, or valet, uh, you know, for the hotel aspect of it. And then down on Hasbrook, uh, we have access here into the garage, uh, for loading, so again, we're, uh, our loading is all conducted within the, the footprint of the building. Um, we don't have any, uh, loading spaces out along the street, uh, we're able to get the, um, uh, loaded vehicles into the building and, and at a site, basically have to speak a little bit more about that, I suppose. Then lastly, we have another access point, uh, down on Hasbrook, uh, again, so we have a couple of different points of, uh, entry and exit into the, uh, parking garage. Um, how the whole thing works in brutality, adjusting traffic levels and, and, uh, conditions and things like that, again, something that, um, you know, we work on, uh, as the details progress on the, uh, site. Also, with, uh, being, the location is, uh, the downtown business area, um, we're looking to provide a pedestrian, uh, connection from the, uh, municipal parking over to, uh, to Hasbrook, we don't want to cut this site off from the rest of the, uh, the downtown area, so it's a public promenade that, that we're, uh, we're calling it out as, um, so to, to provide that additional link, get users here and, and beyond, able to, to walk through the site and get to the, the downtown area and, you know, expanded, uh, community, the rail trail, um, you know, so you're not shooting the park, you know, just to be outlining amenities, um, so the, uh, the walkability, as John mentioned, is, is something that we're, um, looking to, to address in that manner. Small growth aspects, uh, I think we play to a few of those initiatives with, and infill development, um, you know, we're not looking at a, a scroll development, as, as John mentioned, we have a few different buildings, two or three stories, you know, we are going up in, in the stories, um, we're moving up instead of building, building out, um, uh, looking to connect to the municipal services, um, you know, not looking again to, to take away, uh, property, uh, by developing onsite oil fields or, or cethics or things like that, you know, um, and then, you know, of course, with that connection, uh, conveyance and capacity, those sort of things will have to work out, um, when it comes to water and sewer service for the, uh, for the project as well. And we think these, the whole scope of the project plays into some of the comprehensive, um, goals, uh, for the village, so we think we hit, um, you know, broadening, broadening, uh, housing, uh, types sizes, you know, with, um, and people looking to downsize, be able to, to move to something like this, um, you know, the walkability, again, is a, a big aspect in that, connecting to the restaurants, uh, both on our site and, and off, uh, the, uh, the villages and amenities, um, promote tourism development. Again, you see, um, the need for a hotel in the area, a lot of people coming to the area, like the college, um, when they have functions or, or, uh, or other, you know, visitors, conferences, things, things like that, um, Kingston, the Cipsey, they seem to have more, uh, the hotels in the area, so we do recognize that there's an emptying going in, just up the road, but that's, um, you know, still, still in the process, and then we still see as this hotel has a need, um, for this area, for this, for this region. Uh, making downtown, you know, the dominant feature of the region, again, we want this to be a destination, it's a boutique-style hotel. So, uh, with the special amenities of the spa, with the rooftop restaurant, we love this caliber, um, you see people coming into town, uh, parking their car, and, you know, with the aspects of public transportation, close links to the bus station or the ultimate location of that, uh, as well as the, uh, the park and ride, um, walkability, you see, um, you know, be able to come here for the weekend, park your car, and you know, you can more or less be, uh, you can more or less show for yourself around the site without a vehicle, um, trying to promote that, that walkability. And then improve opportunities for community activities, so again, playing into, you know, what's a, uh, what could be done in surrounding areas, and having a facility that could, uh, could handle the, um, the additional guests or, or visitors. I think that kind of sums up, uh, Jason can take you through the more detailed plans we've been getting for the building and how it works with the site.
Thank you.
Well, maybe, yeah. Okay. So maybe, again, Jason Anderson, if you're some sign group, um, maybe I'll just focus a little bit again on the site, just to, uh, see how it relates to the building, because every building is designed for a site, it's what it's on, it's not, uh, you know, design the building, you figure out a spot to put it, it's based on the site, and that's what we did here, and so, the key that we were focusing on is how do we work with the site, that really is so difficult, the fact that it has such a steep grade change, again, so many people in the village, I mean, this, this is a, a facility you're at, uh, you know, we've got hundred rooms, and we've got, uh, residents, and so how do we do that in a reasonable way that allows us to really work with, uh, the, the use of the facility, and so, we use the pit to our advantage, because if you take a look at all of these entrances that we have here, they're all at different levels, and so, they would be able to accommodate different groups of people, and we would be able to take the people that are in, in these varying uses and designate them to certain parking garages below, and that's, that was a big part of how we were able to think of how we'd use this. So essentially, we'd have entrance for, uh, the hotel from, from one area, the residents could have their own entrance, uh, municipal lock could also be a part of that with the residents here, uh, the fact that we've got deliveries that come in at a separate location, and they all come in at different levels within the building, uh, which allow for, they're not even decongestion within the building itself, because we've got four hundred units of parking. The, another big point that we were focused on was the loading, because we're going to have a restaurant, we're going to have a banquet hall, and so we made, um, provisions for two full tractor trailers and a straight body truck simultaneously to be able to be inside the building to do all of them. So, trying to keep everything, again, within the site, and that's really, when you, you think about a site, you've, you've got to address it, uh, address all of these concerns in one of two matters, right? You either build out, or you build up, and this site, we actually decided, we don't have a roof really to build out, but we can build up and down, and so, that's what we did, and we'll take a look at the elevations in just a second, but we have a baseline elevation, you could say, of our building, which is essentially this grade here of this building. But then, as everything drops off, we go down three stories, we're in the basement level, and then we've got two levels of parking, and in addition, we decided, as Justin mentioned, we have eight stories of a residential unit, and one of those is depressed. So, we went down as well as up, and we'll take a look at that as we look at the architectural, uh, facilities here, just go, take a look at the shot. So take a look at this shot, this, um, is an artist's rendition, if you were hovering up at about, uh, let's say fifty feet, what is this up to here, right? So we're, we're sort of in this corner, so what we're looking at here, we're looking at the foreground first, uh, this, these are the two rooftop gardens, as well as the promenade, and we'd be walking, uh, through, uh, public promenade. What we see here is screening for the two-story parking garage, and then we've got, of course, the gardens above. And then as we step up sort of the site here, we, we try to keep it back from our property line, these get plantings, we step back, and the promenade actually sits about seven feet lower than our finished floor of the hotel, so as you're walking between the municipal lot to the park, you're, you've got a rock wall that you're walking along, and you're actually separated from what we'd say the private facilities of the boutique hotel. Then as we work our way, we come up a set of stairs here, and we'll be, of course, at the back of the hotel, uh, we've got a reflecting pool, and a large, uh, public space for the, uh, the hotel, and what we're seeing here, we've got one level of banquet hall, we've got four levels of hotel, that's really all that there is, for those ninety-six rooms, and then we've got our rooftop restaurant and spa. It's connected with an atrium, that's a common entry point for both the residents, as well as the hotel guests, and then, we've got our eight stories of residential condominiums, and one of those being depressed at the level of the basement of the, of the hotel itself. So, looking at it, what we decided to do to try and work with the Heinz and building, as we hear, and that's going to be one of our, our main things that we have to address, is the style of architecture is a contemporary style that deals to very low plate heights, from floor to floor, we have ten feet from finished floor to finished floor. So, when we talk about, people often confuse the amount of stories with the height of the building, so here, a ten-foot floor to floor is much less than a traditional building, which would have twelve-foot floor to floor, to be able to get ductwork and floor structure, we're using concrete slabs as our floor material, and also the sealed, sealed interior. So, uh, we were able to actually drop this building, uh, twelve feet from what it would be if it was built, uh, traditionally, and so that actually brings that height up that way, we did that with both buildings. Uh, the materials that we're looking to use are just very straight-ahead basic materials, it's concrete, stone, glass, and wood. And so that's pretty much everything that you see here, um, the reason for that is, we're looking to create a sustainable building, uh, one that implements a number of green initiatives, part of that being items that can be either sourced locally, be built on- site, uh, concrete that can come from a local plant, so to be able to do that, those are the materials that, that we, uh, we went with here. Uh, in addition to that, when we take a look at the height of the building, we do a little study, so it's interesting, because we know we'll have to do a full visual study if this project decides to move forward, um, but we said, well, let's take a look at some of the adjacent buildings, a banquet hall, for instance, and see where does this, this building fall in relation to it. And so, it's interesting, the, the gutters of banquet hall are 52 foot six inches off of their grade, their finished floor grade, or the outside grade, their grade is only five feet taller than this finished floor. So we took a look at that, that puts their elevation of the gutter, the eve, at 327 feet, the gable ends, elevation 350 feet. So where does that reference? This hotel, the top of the hotel is 334 feet, which puts it at six feet taller than the gable gutters of banquet hall. The hotel itself, or the condos, is 355, which puts it five feet above the gable end of banquet hall. So just to give you a little point of reference, and we'll have to do a full study and show how that, that relates, but sometimes these run rates can be a little bit, you know, yeah, it can be a misconception, because it excludes everything in its surroundings, uh, so that gives you a little breakout on that. Um, I think those are the most, the, the highlights of, of, uh, of really what we were looking to do here, with this, with this facility. Any questions on, oh, sorry, I'm going off Louise.
Louise, did you want to?
Well, hi. Hi, Luis Martinez, uh, President CEO of Alaburu. Um, I think it's a unique project for the village of New Poles, I mean, we created jobs, temporary and permanent jobs, and like I said, we, we thought about parking first of all, and that's why we have such a big number of parking, and we're willing to give some property into the village, uh, once we meet our standards with the quote, how much parking we require for the project. And, uh, I, I think, I mean, these lots have been here 23 years, so I think something to happen on this parcel. And, so, like I say, it will be over 300, uh, temporary jobs, plus, once the job is completed, it will be 125 plus, uh, permanent jobs. And the bill, I mean, the-
Plus the cash we need to do.
And the college needs something like this, uh, around, not only the college, but the village, I mean, the hotel in the village will be such a must use in the village.
Yeah, I think it will be also, you know, when you talk about the economy, what we'll give, this would be a great facility for, um, smaller conventions, you know, I know the power association, we have the municipal, while we, we could go to Sagamore, or Cooperstown, or, you know, the, the state, this would be a, a great facility whenever, and there's thousands of those types of conventions, and whenever you go to, I mean, it's usually either week long, weekend long, um, and people will stay there, but you don't stay in a hotel, you go, probably involve a tour, or go up to the ridge, it would involve, you know, people walking around to the downtown to get souvenirs for their kids or grandchildren, and, you know, try, try new restaurants, so we'll have, and when you're there, as Jason and so, or Justin, you, you know, you go on vacation, you like to park your car, not have to get, you know, not have to keep getting in your car and going to places, so this is a great village to have, and it would be, you know, a great amenity, and also having decent rental units is also a need in the area for any, um, professors at the university, or young folks starting out who, you know, want a decent place to live, it will, you know, afford that opportunity to have, you know, uh, it's going to be condo, but, you know, to purchase a condo without having to go to a, a full house, it's a different type of housing that New Poles does not have a, a lot of, so it will feed a niche, and it's something that, we're not replicating something that's been done a lot in the area, this is something new and, and, and different to the area, that really helps, you know, in diversity, as we said, we're, you know, we have additional parking that maybe can help alleviate some of the concerns I heard mentioned while the church was up here, that parking's, you know, an issue, so that could be a potential, you know, advantage for the village as well. Um, and also to address some of these, I know at the initial, uh, our first presentation to the village, the issue of affordable, uh, units in the village law came up, and I had mentioned that while our initial wish list didn't contain that, we would certainly be willing to, you know, discuss and figure out a way, um, to comply with the law, it was never said that we were against it, you know, I mean, it's, it's, and there are several issues like that, because we're not coming here and saying, we want to build this tomorrow, but what we are saying is, you know, there's two issues, I think, if we're going to move forward, that we need some indication that the village is going to be able to live within those two issues, our height, density, real, you know, really, and then the rest, we can, you know, work out to come, uh, to some accommodation.
Okay. Um, so I want to give everybody a chance, so I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody here and at home, I think you said it pretty well, but let me just restate it, specifically other than showing us these plans, why specifically you're in front of us tonight, because I think everybody's aware, we can't talk about site plan until you get some kind of zoning changes that will allow you to even do this here. So, you want some kind of sort of non-binding sense of what the planning board, how, how we feel, why don't you explain sort of why you guys are actually-
Any issues you have, I mean, uh, let me explain it to me with food. When someone asks me to try a new food, the first question I ask, does it have nuts in it, or does it have citrus in it? Because I'm allergic to nuts and citrus, so if it has nuts and citrus in it, I can't eat it. If it doesn't, I'll pretty much try, you know, try anything, some of it I'll like, some of it, you know, I won't like. Well, we're really kind of asking you tonight, do you see nuts or citrus in there, something that says, hey, this is not for, you know, for the village, and we want, you know, there's nothing you can do-
Okay.
-that wouldn't want us to live, and it's the same thing we said to the village, because we need, you know, this is not something I can come in as an attorney and say, hey, it's in the book, you have to do it, and, you know, if you don't do it, I'm going to fight, this is going to take cooperation, and it's going to take a, a-
Good.
-you know, a partnership, so that's really what we're, we're looking for. Your initial reaction as to whether you think this is something that would be a benefit to the village, and something you'd like to explore further?
Okay, um, I'm going to turn this around. You want to start? You review, I know you guys had an opportunity to meet, so.
Um, I'd like to ask our liaison, um, what were the, uh, what were the nuts and citrus that the village board didn't like?
Not a bad question, um, there was a, a mixed reaction, uh, again, this was a singular instance of the, uh, the board hearing about this, although I personally had met with Louise previously, and I believe he had met with the mayor as well, at least once, or at least I had recommended that they, they do so. So a couple of us had some preliminary, uh, input. One person was highly skeptical about whether this was the best use of the pit, uh, or whether there could be other, not just imagined, but probably uses of the pit, that, uh, might benefit the village more, maybe even a lot more. Uh, but other members of the board were open to, uh, the idea of some use of this space that, uh, if, if it were, uh, architecturally in keeping with the rest of the village, would be, uh, certainly, uh, one that we would entertain looking at. Now, there is this other, this issue, which is a technical issue, of the change of zoning that would have to be taken into account.
And what is the change of zoning that's to have to take?
I believe that there, because there are residences, and this is in the B2 district, the not, yeah, the B2 district, there would have to be an exclusion, uh, that would allow for residential property in the B2 district, or we, not just to say, we would then change this piece of property from B2 to something else. We would need an attorney to tell us what else.
There are actually several changes, I mean, residential is allowed in the B2, we have several single-family homes that predate zoning, um, and they are, um, but there are a number of other changes, you, you couldn't build a hotel of this size, for instance.
Yeah, what we wrote is a, a separate special permit use for a mixed use-
Right.
-conference center development, density, height, I mean, there are, it is a-
Yeah, there are, there are a number of issues, both, um, district standards and, and general standards that we require looking at.
Is that at least, uh, what you're looking for?
Yeah, that, that gives me a better idea. Um, no, we, we had a, a brief meeting with the mayor, the planner, Rich and I sat in on it, and they made an explanation of what they were looking at. I like it.
Yeah, you don't have to be sheepish.
No, I mean, I, I like it, um, I, I, you know, we're going to have to go up at some point as opposed to continuing to spread out.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, as far as the best use of the pit, like, we haven't figured that out in 23 years, so then we're going to wait and figure it out tomorrow. Um, I, I think it'd be a, a good addition, yeah, there's, there's other issues that need to be resolved, but I like the concept.
Okay.
As far as changing the zoning goes-
Yeah.
-in my idealistic view of the future, this property's going to be for sale soon, when we're sitting in.
Okay.
Uh, at least I hope so. I would hope that the, you know, we work with the town in developing a single municipality, uh, structure-
Right.
-now we're town hall current of this, which will make this property also developable. Um, and again, when I look for development in the downtown, I would rather see it be going up than to see it going out. Uh, I have some questions, and I always get a little bothered when I get sold a bill of goods about how good this is going to be for tax revenue for the village.
Yeah.
Because one thing New Poles has never done was sold the environment or the quality of life out for money, no matter how much taxes, so downplay that issue with beer a little bit. Um, environmental issues are, the big concerns here are going to be traffic, are going to be water sewer, and it's going to be, you know, moving people through, because this is going to bring more people into our village. And if we see the future of New Poles as one that we want to encourage tourism, yes, this is the kind of thing we want. If we see the future of New Poles as, as, you know, looking at buildings that are greener, more sustainable, I'm particularly thrilled with this design, I'm sorry to tell you, I wish we'd look more at our main street of the 1880, 1890s buildings we have, and see if you can mimic some of that a little bit better, um, but we're not into that ages, that part of discussion yet.
Right.
Um, that's some of the concerns that I have with it.
My concerns initially are the height of it, and how, and how that would impact the existing residences specifically that way, which is east. Um, would it block anything? Would it end up detracting from what they now have? Would it take away anything? Um, I like the way you did your parking, but I'm still concerned that you don't have enough. Um, I know you gave us numbers on, on the hotel units and the condos, and off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you how many we would require, uh, per, how many parking spaces per unit we would require, I'd have to look it up. Um, and, and you generously indicated that you would be willing to have some of the parking, um, then usable for-
For public.
Public.
Yes.
Um, you know, is that like three? Or is it 30? You know, you see what I'm getting at?
Well, we had online, uh, between 40 and 60, it depends how much parking we want to be needing, looking into the votes, but that's, those were the numbers that we were-
Forty to 60?
Forty to 60.
Uh-huh.
Do you, Michael, how difference is this density to what we just did with the NBR?
That's a good question, um, so this is a two and a half acre site, and we're looking at 80 residential units, right?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one residential units.
Yeah, and then how many hotels?
Ninety-six.
That are, that are nine, the units are two-bedroom mostly.
Two-bedroom, uh, and two-bedroom and three-bedroom.
There's four three-bedroom, the rest are two-bedroom, one-
All right, so roughly 160 people on the residential, and it's, I'm not sure how to calculate through the hotel, but, um, another couple hundred people.
Figure an average 75% occupancy year round.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how to-
Would this have worked in our NBR district, is what I'm thinking?
Probably.
Probably?
Yeah, probably.
I mean, that's new zoning that we just enacted, so we view that, I take that as our future.
So specifically, we're just talking about North Chestnut Street, around roughly Broadhead to Old Kingston Road, and the village board has in front of it, or it's in the process of making its way through the legal channels, it needs to, um, modifications to what's currently in the zone, the, our zoning code as the North Chestnut Gateway District, and we're renaming it, um, Neighborhood Business Residential NBR District. The goal is, the changes we made have mostly taken care of some inconsistencies in the code, and also, um, made some specific, uh, more specific, uh, definitions and allowed the, not allowed the uses, um, and we're looking at that as a, as an area for high-density mixed-use growth, um, and at the moment, I have to say, it does not allow hotels, which was something that I specifically asked be considered, with the intention that that would change, but I wanted to first see if what really would go in there, which is what we want, is mixed-use, um, multi-story residential with, um, commercial, professional retail on the first floors. So, a different concept from what you have, but, um, but in terms of density, yeah, I think easily that would be. Um, so, I, I love the idea of having a hotel downtown, I've been thinking about that for well over 10 years, and wondering which buildings might be suitable for that, given that some of the older hotels were torn down, and now we have other buildings there, a gas station, I guess, for a long time. Um, so I think that concept is great. Um, the residential, tell me a little more, so these are condominium units-
Condominiums.
Mostly two-bedroom, um, I mean, you've addressed this issue that came up before about affordable housing, we do have a 15% affordable housing requirement in our code.
10%.
10%.
Now, it's 15%, I just read it today.
It's 15%?
Yep, chapter 132, it's 15%. Um, at least the version I read. Um, and the specifics, I mean, that's all based around the housing board and all of that sort of stuff, anyway, um, so, but, so your market for residential is, can you give me some idea, I mean, you don't have to hit price points, but like, you mentioned, new college professors?
Miss branch, uh, income, uh-
Okay.
It's not going to be everyone, it's not going to be high-end, it's going to be marketing.
Okay.
So it's not, we're not going high-end, now, you know, uh, what the units are- So it's not, we're not going high-end, now, you know, with the units of four-hundred-plus, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
We're gonna keep it, I mean, we look into the whole market of our New Pauls, so we'll keep the same market.
So my first impression is, this is a lot of, this is a lot to put into this particular space in terms of what you wanna try to accomplish. I like all of the ideas. I mean, I like the concept. I love the idea of a hotel downtown. And I'm not, it's hard for me to tell, unlike the NBR district, which, part of the reason why we're looking at higher density there is because it's already a wide street. It's got most of the infrastructure, it's got public transit. This is a more problematic area, not just site. One of the things that concerns me about this site is that I don't feel that it speaks to the rest of the neighborhood. You've got the fronts of your buildings facing what is essentially the thirty-two-foot wall, if I understand it right, if I'm not right. The access, not, this, this side we're looking now towards Innis Avenue and.
Correct.
Two-O-Aid. The other side where people enter.
Right.
Is actually.
Over here.
Over here.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, and they would be pulling in sort of at the height of the.
At the height of this part of the wall.
Right, okay. Right, so you're building up against the wall. So my concern is that downtown is that way, and the park is this way, and your building doesn't face either of those. And unless you create a new street, like an actual street, I feel like your building is kind of, I'm concerned that what it's gonna do is separate, not, not create, although you're trying to create ways to move through the space, I fear that our, that our main park is gonna feel even more isolated from downtown than it in some ways already does. I also wonder how you're gonna utilize the municipal parking lot as a, as a place that people who live in the apartment building are actually gonna be driving through all the time. So the idea of actually creating a real street that runs from Hasbrook.
To Platteville.
Hasbrook to Platteville, that way. I think is a better consideration, and that may not fall entirely on you, obviously, I don't know, but. And frankly, just to think even a little further outside your specific plan, what I, what I would love to see is a way for this is for the space where the municipal lot is now to become sort of part, like, an extension of downtown. So is there a way to bring some of this to the front and have the parking behind it, or have the parking under it? So is there a way for you and the village to work together to utilize the municipal lot? And I realize, you know, maybe it's easy for me to talk, but, I mean, you guys are putting the time and the money into this sort of thing.
It's something that we'll have to discuss with my architect, how can we accomplish that?
Yeah, and.
How would that work then?
And obviously, you know, the price discussions with the village, but I, I. So the short, the short version of that is, I fear that, that this property isn't, the way you've designed it isn't necessarily speaking to the surrounding community. Personally, I love modern buildings. I don't know if this will necessarily fit in. I, I, I like the undulation of the buildings, I like the materials that you've considered using. But I, but, and I'm not an architect or a designer or anything, I'm just a biologist, I, I don't, you know. But, but I, but I feel like there need, there's clearly ways to incorporate modern architecture into older, with older architecture and create an integrated, really attractive, exciting kind of dynamic, so. But I think part of that is placement, and that's, it's hard to get my head around an eight-story building in the, you know, when we're so used to small things. I'm not opposed to it, I just, it's hard for me to visualize what that would look like here. So that's kind of my take. I, I'm not concerned about the density so much. The height, I think is, as Liz pointed out, the issues for me are, again, how will it impact the existing area? But that's, so, just as an example here, I mean, this is a wonderful rendering, but the space between your, you know, you have a cutout in your site because there's something there.
It's not a parcel. The old Sharpshooter's.
It's not trees, which you have in your rendering, right? There's a, there's a house there.
Yes.
And so.
Yeah, this is not set.
To be fair, when we look at this really attractive drawing, there's somebody's house there that will be staring at a two-foot wall, at a two-story wall.
It's not just the house, it's a school.
Well, the school is behind it.
No, the school bought the Sharpshooter's house.
Oh, they did? Oh, okay, news to me. Okay.
Offices and glass space, yeah.
So that's, that's a, that's an obstacle that I think.
Yeah, so part of our intent was, that was the reason for the stone wall and trying to create landscaping that then separates us from that main park.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, it's a tough part of the, of the site, so.
It's a tough site.
Yeah, it is a tough site. I appreciate what you guys are trying to do. Anyway, that's sort of my take on this. As far as the specific zoning change, personally, and I'm not the, you know, we're not the ones who make the zoning changes, we'll certainly weigh in on it. I have a hard time making a substantial zoning change for essentially one parcel. The zoning that you've, that you've written, John, is clearly for this parcel. We don't have too many other two-acre parcels in the village that would be suitable for this sort of thing. So my first instinct is to be very cautious about doing that kind of zoning change. And I started to go through it pretty carefully, and I have some specific issues. I don't think I need to deal with all of those right now. But I think it's important just to be aware that, I think, if the zoning does happen and it comes to us, I think we'll be very deliberative about making sure that it's suitable, not just for your parcel, but for the village.
Yeah, and that was submitted to, well, I mean, we looked in and we said, and Frank, what's the easiest way?
Of course. Well, that's what we're gonna do.
Just to start a dialogue, and, and, you know, I go back to the original one, and this is like in my conversation with Luis, given that, you know, we are doing something very new and very different for the village. And I've explained to him to go through this process will be of, you know, a decent amount of time and, and, you know, and a lot of work. So I do want, you know, so really what we're here looking to see, what I don't wanna see is going through this whole process, spending all the money and end up saying, no, we want a two-story bed and breakfast with sixteen rooms there to be, you know, consistent. And that's our, you know, our vision for there, and then we went through the process. If that is the vision, let us know now. If it is tweaking and reorientating, as difficult as it may be, and I don't wanna speak for, that's certainly something we understand, making sure you see the view sheds and mitigate to whatever we can to make sure those views you talked about are there. Those are things that are constructive, that I think we can work towards, you know, accommodating, finding the affordable units and how to appropriately, you know, address those issues. Those are all issues, like I said, I think we can do it if it's, you know, stay with a stone architecture only and this type of thing, and, you know, at three stories, then.
Right.
You know, I won't tell Luis to spend any more money on doing that, so really, you know. And I know you can't commit, but we're really looking to see, you know, what your feelings, and I, I think this has been great.
Good.
Very constructive, and I think we have a lot of ideas to chill on, to come back and.
I think the board is interested. There seems to be a certain level of excitement about what you have planned here. The details are important. And, but yeah, I would, I'd love to see you guys take this another step, if you're willing to do that.
Yes.
That'd be great.
I have one more question. Perhaps legally, there's an issue or zoning, I don't know, but is there such a critter as to have condos and hotel and conference center in the same building? Is there such a critter, or is that just not?
It exists in New York City, you know that.
And I mean, there's.
Well, I'm certainly not a big fan of emulating New York City, but.
No, well, you know, if you go down into Carolina, you have planned unit developments are fairly common throughout, you know, kind of feeling Carolinas, there'll be a golf course and condos and, you know, hotels and conference centers on the.
Well, here you have it as two separate.
Yeah, this is, well, it will be, well, people will own the condos, but, you know, it will be one operator of the, you know, the facilities.
Yeah, so part of what we looked at was security. That's one of the biggest issues, security.
Okay.
That's, that's the number one, because you've gotta get, sorry.
Thanks.
You've gotta get everyone in for the residences whenever they want, have their access, and then keep that separate from, you know, they may have kids, and then, but keep that separate from the hotels. So that's, that's a number one concern. There are pieces you can interchange, like for this, we were planning on having the same mechanical systems, the entire basement is dedicated to that, so we're using that, but that's, that's one of the big items. The second, though, is, we intentionally kept it separate because we thought if it was one monolithic building that had, you know, that continuity, that, that was difficult, even more difficult for the site, rather than creating two new structures on the site from architectural standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts?
No.
No? Did you have any comments? Okay, so. Did you hear enough from us?
Yeah.
Any, if you have any other questions for us?
No, we'll, I think what we'll do is, you know, go take your comments, maybe tweak it and come back and maybe ask them for you know, report back to the village what we think we have and start working towards some solution.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Michael, yes, what is the building that would be in between the two? It's a, that existing house, there's a home there, that was a residence, or is it, it wasn't, it was built as a house, a residential building, but it's now.
It used to be called the Sharpshooter's House. Bridgian was an old gun shop, and then I converted it over to two apartments. And then it was a local person owned it for quite a while and sold it over to the Mount Laurel School.
So, Mount Laurel.
They're now using it for office and bathroom space.
Oh, so it's on the west side of the.
Kind of like Innis Avenue more than.
It's across the street from the main school.
Yeah, backside of Laurel School, backside of Old Castle.
If you go down Hasbrook and you turn right, there's a sort of a drainage area, and then there's that house, and that's the house we're talking about. And if you drive up and there's a house at the corner as you turn.
Okay. I was turned around, I wanted that, okay. Okay. Do we have any energy left for?
I stayed with this especially, I hope you're gonna have it.
We're gonna have it. You stayed, so we're gonna have it. Okay, so we need to have a discussion about the proposed changes to two twelve twenty-three for site plan review requirements. And this all stems from our new responsibilities in looking at smaller site plan issues for one- and two-family homes and expansions and things of that sort. So what we'd like to do is try to get through this so that we can send something to the village board.
Recommend it to the, to the village board.
Got it.
It actually has gone up to the county already, so we're taking care of that referral requirement, and then we'll come back.
Okay. So really, it's just, I mean, in one form or another, hopefully, everybody has seen this at least once. I think the big thing is that we've got detailed site plan requirements for this, applications we're accustomed to, and then we have those in section B three, we have those for new one-family or two-family dwellings or expansions. And we had gone through this list and shortened it sometime earlier this summer. So this is the list of things that would typically need to be part of a site plan application for the smaller, the smaller projects, and.
You've actually seen that before.
Yes.
And actually voted on it. But what's happened since then is that Brian suggested some amendments which required reformatting it into this A and B format.
Right.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, so the A, the A format now is largely his suggestions, which I edited to make it a little bit easier to follow the different thresholds that require site plan.
Okay.
But I think it's a good change, because it puts a site plan requirements up front.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it is, and it's, and the list is clear, so.
And there have been some minor additions to the list of what's required to be submitted.
Right.
Such as topography for commercial projects, not for, I don't think for single-family homes.
No.
And I've gone through it, and I think it's actually in very good shape now, a good improvement from what we have, what we have now.
The part that is of interest to me, and I was talking to Brian about today, is on the last page, which is the exceptions, number six. So it gives the planning board now a fair degree of flexibility during the early part of a review process or pre-application to make some carefully thought-out decisions about what material is actually required or might be waived for a specific project. Which is, you know, something that it's good for us to be able to do, but we need to be careful about how we would handle that so that we're fair in all cases.
Consistent.
And consistent.
Above all else.
Exactly. So the only issues I had, I think there's a word missing here, as determined by the planning board during pre-application review or during of a complete application? I think during review. Okay. Should be reviewed, so in, in Canadian part six A.
So good to have an editor on the board, isn't it?
Yeah, it's great, wonderful. So wonderful to have an editor on the board.
Anyway.
I looked right over that.
Six A, the third line down, it says during of a complete application, it states during review of. And then the only other thing is, it says in that, also in that paragraph, it refers to minor site. And I'm just wondering, is that, how do we, how do we make a determination about minor and not major?
That's your decision.
Okay, thank you.
There's not, there's not a definition of minor or major.
Okay.
But it conveys the intention, which is not to, not to go out of bounds and just say, oh, it's a major site, but we don't want to hear a public hearing.
Okay, fair enough. Just wanna check.
Your decision.
Okay, so I have no other issues with it. I'm happy to consider approving it and recommending we send it all back to the village board.
I agree.
Are we all good on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll move that you send it on to the village board for.
Okay, so the motion is to approve this with a minor structural change and refer it back to the village board. We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Appreciate all the time. We have two sets of minutes to approve. And those are somewhere. August eighteenth, I wasn't here, so I'll leave it to you guys to figure it out now.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks again.
Thank you, Julie.
Aye, Julie.
The problem I have with the August eighteenth is that it's regarding the seventy-one Main Street, I D Jewett?
Oh, yeah, that still, that still didn't get fixed.
I D Jewett was the Lugano Street.
Yes.
I believe the name was, the applicant was Goldman, I believe, on this one.
Yeah, that is.
The zoning district would have been B two.
I will fix it and circulate to you any property in the morning.
B two?
Yep.
Zoning district would have been B two.
All right, so you wanna hold off on that one again?
Yeah.
Approve it in two weeks? You see the change, or you approve it?
I don't know, I could have put a subject to, to, to make a change, it's a simple, I think this was a typo. Make a change. It's a simple, I think this is a typo.
Okay. Yeah, because on the bottom it says Stephen Goldman.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and B two.
And the site plan resolution is all okay, so, you know.
Then you guys do it.
Anything says ID Jewett on it, my name is associated.
Okay.
Okay, that's on, I
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Excuse myself from all that.
Okay. All right, so
So I would, I would move the meeting of August eighteenth as amended.
Do you approve?
Do you approve?
So move.
Second. Yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye, all in favor. Aye.
Aye. All right, September twenty-first, our last meeting. I have no issues with these minutes.
I'm, I'm sorry, before we do that, why is this sheet with the NBR District attached to the minutes?
Why is the sheet about the NBR District attached to the minutes? I, I don't know. Mine isn't.
The secretary. I don't know. The secretary, someone can
It's not part of the minutes, though.
Let me see.
It's got you here.
Update on the B three? Yeah. That's August eighteenth. Oh, yeah, that's wrong. It's got me in there.
Yeah.
No, I was absent. No, that's right. You must have discussed it, that's why. You probably mentioned it. I don't know.
Hey, I don't remember that at all.
Okay, may I go back and double-check?
Check it.
Check it and I'll recirculate information.
So
It's them are okay.
Okay, all right. So we still approve it pending the
Yep, pending those changes, yeah.
Okay.
All right, September twenty-first, any issues, conversation, otherwise I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September twenty-first.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we go, one more thing. There are several I'll call them CE opportunities for everybody who, on the planning board who might want to get some professional planning seminars due year-belt. So on October fourteenth, so next week, seven to nine-thirty, the Ulster County Transportation Council sponsoring a free seminar at the College Lounge at SUNY Ulster.
What day is, is fourteen?
Uh, that would
Wednesday?
Is that a Wednesday? Okay.
All right.
Was that approved for us for credit?
Um, I'm guessing they, these have been in the past, so I'm guessing that they are. Typically the Ulster County ones are. I don't know if the Village Board has approved any blanket ones or not.
No, the only thing, the only ones that the, the Village Board approves blanket ones for are the fire department because of the
Okay.
How, but the Village Board does happen to be meeting at two o'clock on Thursday and I could, if there was somebody who wanted to, if I hadn't emailed it tomorrow, I could ask the board to consider it.
Okay, so there's that one. I'll just put these out there. Everybody should have received emails about these at one time or another. The day before, the New York Conference of Mayors is sponsoring a free seminar for conducting meetings, seeker, county referrals and drafting decisions. How to Avoid Common Pitfalls of ZBAs and Planning Boards. Sounds like something I should go to. Registration and Training, that's in Highland Mills, New York. And that's from five-thirty to eight P M, or six to eight, registration is just before. And I think that one's also free. It is. And finally, there's one I just got in the mail today, which I'll circulate to you all. Which is on December eleventh, so it's a little ways away. It's an all-day conference at the Pace University Law School in White Plains. Their Land Use Law Center is having their annual Land Use and Sustainable Development Conference. And I have no idea what the December eleventh is. It's sort of their big splashy conference they do every year and this one's called Reflecting on the Past, Planning for the Future, Celebrating a Hundred Years of Zoning. Okay, so
I think it's a good one.
And I'll, we'll send you all details about that. That one is not free and I don't remember, it doesn't, I didn't get the information about what it costs. Okay, so that's that. Unless there's anything from any of you guys?
There's also one at, from Mohawk Consultants.
Oh, Mohawk Consultations?
The Consultations, yes. It's in November.
Yeah.
It's not free, but it has to do with dealing with open space, public space.
Oh, right.
That one, I, I was going to go and send myself to regardless of whether anybody was going to cover the cost. I'll
Can you send me the details of that?
Sure, I can email that.
Yeah, why don't you know it to everybody?
Okay.
And we should have, I apologize, I'm not up on all the financial stuff yet for the planning board, but I'm pretty sure we have at least a hundred dollars apiece to spend on training.
I'm sorry to say I don't know. I'm just asking. See, but I'm happy asking, seeing you give your call. It's an
Okay, yeah, if you wouldn't mind checking, I'm pretty sure that there was five hundred dollars put in this year's budget for, for training. Okay.
Can I ask, Katie, do you have a permanent replacement here?
No, I know that it is the intent of the Village Board to hire a specific planning and zoning secretary.
Yep.
I just happen to be described, since your secretary has a, a master's class on for unfinished dayings.
Yep, hopefully that'll all get settled soon, maybe this week.
Take a look.
Great. Yep. You guys just want to stay and stay and stay. Otherwise I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I don't want to hang out. It's good.
You do, okay.
Good internet connection, things are fine.
Uh, making a motion to adjourn.
Who's making that?
I am.
The chair is?
Well, I'm asking somebody then. Please make a motion.
I'll move with adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah, okay. All right, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.